Okay, we'll call this meeting of the Zoning Board of Appeals to order. May I have a roll call, please?
Ms. Chester.
Here.
Mr. Cho.
Ms. McLaughlin.
Here.
Ms. Utman. Mr. Warrenbrum. Mr. Weiskopf. Mr. Welch.
Here. I believe we do have a quorum. Are there any changes to the agenda? Hearing none. Then we will turn now to approval of the minutes of the November 16th meeting.
I move to approve the minutes of the November 16th meeting.
It's been moved and now seconded. All members indicate their approval by saying aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Same. The minutes are approved. Are there any written communications?
There are communications associated with the cases which we will state for the record when those come up.
All right. Any continued public hearings? All right. At this time, I would like to swear in anybody who thinks they may want to speak to the board tonight. So, anybody that need to stand up and raise your right hands.
Can I just clarify? That also means any applicants that are in the room?
Do you swear or affirm that any testimony you give before this board tonight will be true and accurate to the best of your ability?
I do.
At this time, we will call for hearing ZBA case number 2016-C-03. And we have a staff report.
We have before us case number ZBA 2016-C-03, which is a request by Sharon Walker Watkins for a conditional use permit to allow an owner occupied bed and breakfast at 1607 Gulfview Drive in the R1 Single Family Residential Zoning District. Although the applicant is not able to attend the meeting tonight in person, she has joined us by telephone, and she's here currently. She has also sent an email statement which has been provided to you. There are a few additional copies in the front row if anybody would like to review her statement. The requested use is allowed as a conditional use in the R1 district. A valid written protest has been properly submitted to the city opposing the requested conditional use permit, bearing the signatures of more than the required 40 percent of the lot owners within the 200 feet of the subject property. There is a copy of the petition there in front of you. And if the permit were to be approved, the written protest would require a two-third vote in favor by the Zoning Board of Appeals or three of the four board members that are in attendance tonight. A second petition has also been submitted with signatures of 15 additional Gulfview subdivision residents who are outside the 250 distance range. The outside and inside are underlined there at the top of the petitions. In September, city staff fielded a call regarding presumed rental activity at the home, and staff followed up with an inspection and a notice of violation ordering cessation of the operation as a bed and breakfast in. This was followed by correspondence regarding the options available to the homeowner for illegally renting the home by either applying for and being granted a conditional use permit, or registering the property as a rental property with the city's rental property program and payment of those rental registration fees. On November 21st, the applicant did submit an application for a conditional use permit to operate an owner occupied bed and breakfast in the home. And for folks' edification, I won't read the definitions to you, but for those in the audience, the difference between an owner occupied bed and breakfast and a bed and breakfast in is the fact that the owner occupied version is conditionally permitted in the R1 district and is permitted by right in any of the business districts. A bed and breakfast in is not permitted in any sense in an R1 residential district and is permitted by right in any of the business districts. The bed and breakfast owner occupied does require the owner to occupy the home, whereas the in does not. The home is located on the west side of Gulfview Drive, north of East Country Club Road, and west of Cunningham Avenue and US Route 45. Let me see if I can blow this up a little bit. I think that's as big as I can make it. To the west of the subject property is the Urbana Country Club. Further east is Willow Court Subdivision and the Willow Brook Apartment Homes. Further south is the Cunningham Children's Home and its open space. All of these areas are zoned R1 Single Family Residential. And we've got the zoning showing up here. The Children's Home to the south is zoned R4, and the apartments are zoned R5 to the southeast. But everything in Gulfview Subdivision is zoned R1. The home itself is a 2,500 square foot single-family residence on a half acre parcel with four bedrooms and two bathrooms. The city has fielded several requests for owner occupied bed and breakfasts. In 2014, there was one for a owner occupied bed and breakfast in an R2 Single Family Residential District. This was denied. In 2014, there was a bed and breakfast owner occupied approved in an R1 district. It was for one of five bedrooms in the home. In 2003, there was a owner occupied bed and breakfast in an R2 district, which was first denied and then approved with conditions limiting the number of rentable bedrooms to four of the nine bedrooms in the home, as well as securing off-site parking. And finally, in 1990, there was one approved in an R2 district. Past concerns of the Zoning Board of Appeals and neighbors in these cases included owner residency, impacts on neighborhood character, traffic, and parking availability. While the city cannot enforce private covenants, it is important to note that the original 1956 plating of Gulfview Subdivision included a set of 14 covenants restricting use of the land, including covenant number three, which is up on your screen and is -- we'll zoom in here. No store or business or commercial building shall be erected or maintained on any lot in the subdivision. The board members have before them copies of letters that were submitted by two interested parties. In addition to the valid written protest and the additional petition, we've received communications from neighbors and other concerned parties. These concerns included impact of the bed and breakfast on the residential nature of the neighborhood, the impacts of on-street parking by guests, and inadequacy of off-street parking availability, the owner's past or current non-residency status, impact of traffic on neighborhood traffic patterns, and inappropriate activities of past guests at the neighboring golf course. As far as development regulations go, an owner occupied bed and breakfast requires two off-street parking spaces for the owners, as well as one additional space for each rented guest room. The property can currently accommodate six vehicles parked off-street. We have some photos here. A frontal view of the property, as well as an overview showing that the access drive is 46 feet by 16 feet between the garage and the road right-of-way, which could accommodate four cars stacked, as well as two cars in the garage. An application for a conditional use permit must demonstrate the following requirements: that the proposed use is conducive to the public convenience at that location. The application states that a bed and breakfast will increase the safety of the community as compared to the house being vacant. The applicant would like to better utilize the four-bedroom property by renting bedrooms to guests for short-term stays. As according to the application, the home will be maintained and be an attractive opportunity to college professors and medical professionals to have short, one-to-four week stays, families of four to six people to visit the community. Staff analysis determined that although the property is close to some neighborhood destinations, it is almost two miles from the city's downtown and two and a half miles from the U of I campus as far as major destination connectivity. Finally, it is located within an exclusively single-family residential area on a narrow street, and additional guest traffic and parking may impact residents. The second requirement for the conditional use permit is that the proposed use is designed, located, and proposed to be operated so that it will not be unreasonable, injurious, or detrimental to the district in which it is to be located or otherwise injurious to the public welfare. The application states there is adequate parking in the garage and on the access drive to accommodate the required off-street parking. A staff analysis has determined that the proposed use will likely increase the amount of traffic on Gulfview Drive, which already accommodates traffic from 27 single-family homes. Although the application indicated there are house rules about noise and activities, the city staff has received verbal comments regarding activities of past guests using the private golf course which is accessible from the rear of the home. The final requirement is that the proposed use conforms to the applicable regulations and standards of and preserves the essential character of the district in which it is to be located. The proposed use is potentially consistent with the general purpose and intent of the R1 district and is potentially compatible with the existing residential uses. The home does have four bedrooms and could typically be expected to house several family members with multiple cars. The proposed use would conform to all setbacks and development regulations of the R1 district in which it is located. Staff analysis has determined that the neighborhood is quiet with little through traffic, and personal and vehicular traffic would increase due to the proposed use. City staff did note a complete absence of residential on-street parking during their site visit. In addition, the proposed use may also be in conflict with the subdivision covenants which prohibit commercial activity in the subdivision. In summary, although the proposed use is potentially consistent with the general purpose and intent of the R1 district, its introduction of commercial activities to the residential neighborhood, activities which are likely to be in conflict with perpetual binding subdivision covenants currently in place, as well as possible impacts to local traffic, make it not conducive to the public convenience at this location and render it not in conformance with the essential residential character of the district. A valid written protest opposed to the conditional use permit bearing the required number of signatures of proximal lot owners has been submitted, which would now require a favorable two-thirds vote of the members of the Board of Zoning Appeals to authorize the conditional At this point, the options of the Zoning Board of Appeals are to grant the conditional use as submitted by a favorable two-thirds vote, or deny the conditional use as submitted, or grant the conditional use along with any additional conditions and requirements as are appropriate or necessary for the public health, safety, and welfare by a favorable two-thirds vote. Based on the evidence presented in the staff memo, without the benefit of additional evidence presented at the public hearing tonight, staff do recommend that the Zoning Board of Appeals deny the proposed conditional use permit for the reasons we've already given, which are impact on residential character of the neighborhood, impact on safety and traffic, and possible conflict with subdivision covenants. If the Zoning Board of Appeals does approve the proposed use by the required two-thirds vote, staff recommends the following conditions: submission of proof of residence in the home and maintaining residence in the home during the periods that the home is rented. Number two, the owner occupied bed and breakfast use shall be limited to three bedrooms or less. And three, the applicant shall provide five off-street parking spaces, limiting vehicle parking in the private portion of the access drive to three vehicles or fewer, plus up to two vehicles in the garage. That is the end of the staff report, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for staff?
How many Airbnb units are there in the city of Urbana?
That's a very good question. We looked at Urbana, and there were roughly 75 listings for private rooms or shared rooms. Overlaying those with the zoning districts, the vast majority of these were in R3 residential districts or industrial districts. And there were roughly 20 that were for the entire home, and the other 55 were for shared rooms or private rooms, which would likely be something akin to an owner occupied bed and breakfast. This was very cursory research. It did not look at the amount of availability for those. They could have been for weeks at a time or individual days.
I guess so, based on reading this, technically those Airbnbs are not allowed, would fall under, I guess, the same discussion?
Quite likely, yes.
So, my question would be then, is the zoning ordinance currently out of date that does not reflect, kind of, I guess, the economic changes that have happened that have allowed Airbnb?
Let us take a moment. I'm sorry. I just want to take a moment to verify the districts in which this use is a permitted use before we respond.
Okay. So, the -- let me refer back. The owner occupied bed and breakfast use is permitted by right in all business districts. So, if somebody in a business district wanted to operate an owner occupied bed and breakfast, they would not need a conditional use permit. So, those that are operating in those business districts would not need to have a conditional use permit. Those that are operating in a residential district would likely either have to get a conditional use permit or register their property as a rental property. Our research did not look at cross-checking to see if any of those in those -- of those Airbnb listings may have registered in the rental property program.
And I think part of the reason for that is because they don't give their addresses, and so some of this is a bit of a guess, unless it comes as a complaint to us, which is the case before you. It was a result of a neighbor complaint.
Do we have a definition of owner occupied? Because I noticed some of the complaints were that the place is not being occupied at different times. So, do we have a definition of owner occupied? Because what I'm prefacing that on is if we were to grant this, are these complaints that we hear that the owner is not occupying some kind of in-run around that?
Well, she would, to meet the letter of the definition, she would have to start occupying the home. And that was then one of the recommended conditions of granting a conditional use permit is to provide proof of residency and maintain that residency while the permit is -- while the home is being rented.
Some kind of continuous occupancy, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Now, that would not necessarily preclude her from leaving, you know, for vacation or whatever.
Right.
But they could not be left unsupervised. And again, you know, the other option to continue renting the home would be to register with the city's rental property program, which is the other option that was provided to the applicant.
Any other questions for staff?
Yeah, I'm just trying to think this through. So, if someone has a house in an R1, whether or not they live in it or rent out a room on Airbnb, technically, they complain or not, they are not in compliance with current ordinance.
That would be my interpretation of the Airbnb zoning ordinance.
So, in this instance, because there was a complaint and building safety or city staff went out there to investigate, it was told to cease any kind of Airbnb operation?
Correct.
And then, I believe, the applicant applied for whatever was the best fit currently in the zoning ordinance in order to continue operation of an Airbnb essentially.
That is a matter of opinion. The two options were applying for the conditional use permit or applying to the rental property program, either one of which can be done in the R1 district.
Okay. And if so, if I had a house and I was Airbnb-ing it and I applied as a rental, paid the $30 or $50 or whatever it is, I could continue to rent?
So, I'm not --
I can speak to that, Marcus.
Okay, thank you.
So, the rental registration program requires a lease to be in place. So, generally speaking, those would be longer-term rentals than you would normally have with an Airbnb. So, if you had a lease in place, you could, yes, be part of the rental registration program.
Say that last part again. If you had a lease for an Airbnb, how -- wait, how does that work?
So, you would need to have a lease in place in order to be part of the rental registration program, and of course, fill out the paperwork for that and pay the registration fee. So, if you wanted to use an online service such as Airbnb to advertise that, that's fine, but that lease requirement is part of the rental registration program.
And is the term of the lease two days, three days, or a year, or is there a minimum?
Well, if you look at the definitions of hotel-motel and in our zoning ordinance, that is a 30-day. In order to be a bed and breakfast or a hotel-motel, the maximum stay is 30 days. So presumably, a lease would be more than that.
So, Airbnb would not qualify under a rental registration program currently?
I --
Because no one's staying in Airbnb for more than 30 days, I'm going to assume.
Correct.
So, basically, there are no options for this current owner to operate as an Airbnb, nor, I guess, the other 70 units that are currently listed on Airbnb in Urbana.
Well, I would say that not all 70 of those are -- would require a conditional use permit because it's only those that are in the residential districts that would require the conditional use permit. Any that are in any of the business districts, which a vast majority of -- only three of the 75 listings as of today were in R1 districts. There were several that were in R2 districts, more that were in R3 districts, all of these being less intense, excuse me, more intense residential, you know, zoning districts. But the majority of them were in B3 business districts, B3U, IN1 districts. Those would not require a conditional use permit. I would agree that some of them would require a conditional use permit.
So, based on this decision today, anyone that's in kind of an R1 or R designation would no longer be able to operate Airbnb?
I did not say that.
Well, that would be the case anyway because for the rules that are in the zoning ordinance today.
Right.
It would require a conditional use permit. So, this decision doesn't affect them. They would automatically be out of compliance with the zoning ordinance regardless of your decision.
So, again, it goes back to kind of my initial statement. Is it because the zoning ordinance is now out of date that does not reflect, kind of, the current mechanisms in place for one- or two-day rentals at Airbnb? I mean, really, I think we're trying to force something into a bed and breakfast conditional use, which I don't necessarily agree with.
I personally am not familiar with other cities handling of Airbnbs. There may be some that have an additional use, zoning use of Airbnb that requires a different process, but I'm not aware of them. This is currently the city of Urbana's standing management of owner occupied bed and breakfast, somebody wanting to rent a room to a transient guest, and that's how it is written, transient guests.
Has there been any one looking at Champaign?
Is that the applicant?
That's the applicant, yes, Ms. Walker Watkins.
Can you hold on for just a second, please? Are there any further questions for staff?
Okay.
All right. Now, we will hear from you applicant.
Yeah, I'm Sharon Walker Watkins. I'm the owner. And that question I just asked regarding the neighboring community of Champaign, as you said, you weren't familiar with any other city's rules and regulations with regard to Airbnb, but I just wonder if you have any idea about Champaign. Can you hear me?
As part of this application, we are looking only at our own zoning ordinance, as well as how we've interpreted in the past and treated other cases in order to provide our analysis for this case. We have not conducted an analysis of how other communities address this issue.
But just as the young man was referencing, basically, that you are binding my hand to policies that were set decades ago. And we're, you know, we're just a moving forward economy that I think that Airbnb sits very nicely into. I was never told what the complaint was about the use of my property for this purpose. And, you know, it'd be, I'd be happy to know what that was so that I could better, I don't know, better monitor that kind of activity, if it's use of golf course or going on the golf course or that kind of thing that I myself have done as an owner. But you mentioned that 1956 is when the plaques were set out. It was set up as an R1 in 1956. That was 60 years ago. And I wondered, do areas ever become rezoned or get new zoning ordinances as times change? As, you know, this is six decades later. A lot of things have changed in 60 years. So, that's just kind of a -- well, that's a question. Does that ever change?
So, the zoning ordinance, of course, changes. Properties are sometimes rezoned. However, I think what was mentioned were the covenants that belong to the subdivision, and the city does not have any power to change those. That's really up to those that own property in the subdivision. I'm sure there's a process that the homeowners association could describe to you separately, but the city is not involved in those discussions.
What? Okay. I've never been provided with those homeowners' covenants, and I've lived their property for 10 years. I don't pay any HOA like that to be bounded by covenant of the neighborhood. I would like to ask a little bit more about what you do describe as proof of residence.
Was that a question? I'm sorry, we're unclear if that was a question.
Yes. What is proof of residence?
Well, I believe the threshold is owner occupancy, and so there's a number of things that one would need to do in order to be -- that one would need to do in order to be considered owner-occupant. I'm not sure we would want to provide a laundry list. It's more of a, there's a number of things that go into that, and we want to ensure that each of those are met, but I wouldn't want to necessarily give you all of the list, because I might leave one off, or I might forget, you know, put too many in. But I think it's one of those things where you know it when you see it. And so, at the minimum, I suppose, where the tax bill goes, but there's a number of other things that we'd need to look at, and we'd probably need to look at some past cases to see how we've analyzed that before.
Okay, I'd be interested to know that, if you could give me some detailed information on that. I don't know if it's going to be important, depending on what your decision is here. But, you know, I do just want to say that I do think that my property has been well-maintained, and that I've been put, like I put in my letter, in a difficult position, because of all of the policies that are going on with Urbana in terms of existing homeowners, between the tax, the very tax, heavy tax burden, as well as the favorability for new construction, which makes sale of the home less likely, and less likely to result in any substantial profit. Even the idea of renting the property for a lease, a term lease, is a losing proposition as a result of the heavy tax burden, because it's over $500 a month for the property taxes there. So this option of the Airbnb actually was something I came to looking for a way to keep from losing money on my property, frankly. And the big loss from it, it has to do with the very onerous tax burden, which, you know, which funds all these activities that are going on here tonight, I'm sure, and all of the businesses that, all of the business of the city of Urbana. And I'm happy to pay those taxes, but when I need to do something that is going to help me be able to be a meaningful contributor to the community, I would really appreciate some opportunity to be able to gainfully do it. And this is, I was surprised to find out how much demand there was for my property. I've had contractors want to stay there, people coming for weddings, people coming for church gatherings, I've got all kinds of people, people from the university. So there's a wide spectrum of people that are looking for that kind of accommodation. There's inadequate hotel space in Urbana, and even in Champaign, with all of the activities that go on with the university and the hospital. But, you know, I thought that, one, I thought it would be, it had my advantage to rent it this way, and also, it represents a 7% city sales tax for the city, and that's collected by Airbnb, so it's, I thought, a win-win. Now, in terms of the neighbors and the petitions that you have collected, 40% of the residents within 250 feet signed a petition to have this denied, you know, I have not been made privy to what their concerns are, but, you know, I would be open to rectifying whatever their concerns might be, because I do have a pretty big driveway and two-car garage, and I don't think they're gonna have to worry about a whole bunch of cars parked all over the place. Actually, a good-sized home, so I don't think anybody's gonna be disturbed by anybody in the house. Now, as far as people being in the yard, I have a really big backyard, and the backyard goes all the way right up to the golf course. But I have to say that I have not made any specific statements to, to guess, to say you should not go on the golf course, if that's private property. But, you know, I don't know, I guess I just, I'm just pretty frustrated that this can't be anything that can be worked out just from the standpoint of it not even being recognized, Airbnb not even being recognized, even though it's a multi-billion-dollar company. I think Urbana needs to develop a policy about it, one way or the other. And in terms of me using my property that way, if you want to grant me the privilege to do it as owner-occupied, and give me a very specific definition of what you mean by that, then that is something that I would be interested in doing. So, I don't think I have any other statement to make about that, you have my letter. And I found six entire homes that are being used as Airbnbs, and I guess in different kinds of districts in Urbana. There's over 27, I found 27 in Champaign, for entire homes being used for this purpose. So, you know, I think it's a coming trend, I think it's a coming demand, and I don't think it's gonna go away, and I think you're gonna continue to be challenged to reconcile the property use for the demand that the public has for this. So, I know, I'm not supposed to be talking about the Airbnb, I'm supposed to be talking about the owner-occupied bed and breakfast, but I really think that's an antiquated, excuse me, an antiquated use. And I think that the more appropriate use would be, or another alternative would be to the Airbnb. So I want to really encourage you to forward with coming up with a policy for that, where it can be something the community can embrace, as well as the guests, as well as the hosts, and that the city can actually profit from. So that's it, that's all I have to say.
Are there any questions for the applicant? Yeah, go ahead.
I have a question for the applicant. Is, so do you currently reside at the residence?
No.
And do you have plans to reside at the residence in the future?
If I don't, then I will have one of my family members.
And I guess this is for staff. Does that qualify as owner-occupied, or how does that?
If one of those family members is an owner.
Is my daughter, my daughter, a owner? No, I mean, she's not on the lease, she doesn't pay the taxes, so she's not an owner.
I would say that she would not be considered an owner if she was not paying the taxes or on the deed.
Okay.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Matt.
How long have you been operating this as an Airbnb? I don't know if you said that, but...
August.
Since August of this year?
August this year. I'm currently not, it's now, it's not available after the complaint was lodged, and I received the letter to cease and desist. But yeah, it's just been, it was just a few months.
Is that all, Matt? Any further questions for the applicant? Thank you. You might want to stay on the line. Yeah, go ahead.
Sorry, I have one more question. When is the last time that you occupied the residence?
Well, I can tell you this, that is the address on my driver's license. I voted there in the presidential election this year.
Okay, thank you.
Any additional questions for the applicant? Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak in favor of the application? Hearing none. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to the application? Please come forward. You need to sign in. Proceed.
Thanks for having this hearing. My name is Jim Button, and I live at 1701 Golf View, my wife and I do, which is the house directly north of the proposed permit property. My wife and I purchased the house approximately two years ago, with the understanding that there were covenants that were provided to us as part of the sale of the house. And those covenants, of course, included Paragraph 3, which said that no businesses could be maintained or ran out of that, our subdivision. And I really believe that that is the case, that we wouldn't have moved in there, or we would have had a different thought process if we were buying a house that was next to an Airbnb or a bed and breakfast. We would have, it wouldn't have been worth the same amount of money to us. So I think this could have an impact to us directly as we go to try to sell the house somewhere down in the future. That's one point that I have. So the other is that it is a narrow street. Most streets in town, I believe, are 36 or more feet wide. This one's about 30 feet wide. And we've seen a huge increase in traffic at the house with parties that go on over there, holiday parties, people that park in the street when they have their guests over. And the impact for us is, once we're around the cars, we just pull into our driveway, but the impact for us as a community or as a neighborhood is that street is the feeder street to not only the 20 or so houses that are on that street, but also the whole area to the north of that, which is approximately 114 total houses. So there's a lot of traffic on that street. There's no curbs on that street, there's no sidewalks on that street, and it's a narrow street. So to have that much more traffic on there by a business being ran, I don't think is, I don't agree with. The Airbnb ad that we originally found on Airbnb for this property stated that it was on a golf course. And that would immediately lead somebody who is trying to rent the house to think that they had access to the golf course, whether they knew it was a private golf course or not. Again, there's been no one there to monitor who's in the house, and there may be somebody there to let them in, but it hasn't been occupied since the August, since it started to be used as Airbnb in August. My point is, they had access to the golf course, and they used the golf course. There were contractors that stayed in the house with work trucks, which aren't permitted in the neighborhood because of the covenants. But in any case, they brought their own golf clubs, and they went out and played two or three holes at night when they got off work. And it's a private property behind there, of course, the golf course is. And if you've noticed on the opposition petition, which I helped to put together, the top signature in opposition to it is from the golf course itself, because they are, they share the property line, so they're, of course, within 250 feet of the property. Other incidents, they advertise that they take dogs at the Airbnb. We've had incidents where dogs have been walked out onto the golf course, walked along the property line, and one dog was even in our backyard at our back porch. And when I put it on a leash to take it back over to that house, the people said, "Oh, I forgot, we put him outside," and kind of laughed it off. It was, you know, it's just a situation that happens when you don't know your neighbors. And I just was uncomfortable with that. My wife's uncomfortable with the safety of the neighborhood. She gets home earlier than I do in the evenings, and not knowing who's in the house next to you is a concern to her. And not knowing from week to week, or even day-to-day, who's gonna be in it, whether it's gonna be contractors that are transient, or whether it's gonna be a family, or whether it's gonna be a professor. We just have no idea who it is, and there's no way for us to get to know that person. I have, probably my biggest concern is the lack of the community developed people, development people from Urbana have been able to enforce the cease order that they put out in October, or maybe it was even put out in September. Do you know when it was put out? Okay. Since then, since you asked them to cease, it didn't stop. There were probably 10 or 12 different incidents when the property owner still rented it out without it being owner-occupied. Now, my understanding is, and I've never met her, because we moved in after she had left the state, is that she may come back to inspect the property, but my real concern is, if you're gonna approve this, how do you enforce the owner-occupied portion of it? Because it's not like I just decided to buy, an example would be, I decided to buy a house and then run a true bed and breakfast out of the house. This is just the model of the Airbnb, and I don't know how you guys, how the city is gonna enforce, if you approve this permit, enforce the owner-occupied portion of it. I would feel more comfortable if it was owner-occupied, but how do you enforce that, since you have, since the city has not been able to enforce the cease order that they put out the first of October? I may have, I think that's it for my concerns. I'm for sure opposed to it, and we have, they stated that there were 40% was needed to do the two-thirds. I think we have 63% actually on the petition to oppose it, of the people that were in the 270 or 250 feet, and there's another 16 or 18 people that are just in the neighborhood that are opposed to it, and most of them are probably behind me. So I appreciate you giving me the time.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Anyone else wants to speak, come forward, please.
My name is Richard Hedrick.
Sorry, sir, you need to sign in first.
I'm sorry.
That's all right.
My name's Richard Hedrick. I own the property south, right directly south of that house, and from what he said, we've watched people come in and out of there, construction companies, people parking in the middle of the driveway, going and using the golf course, and I think it affects the value of my home, and I've lived there 20 years. I've never seen anything like this. I don't understand how it started. They had it rented for a year to a construction company, and when they did, he was storing doors and wood and stuff alongside the property right next to my driveway. So my wife and I, we protest this, we're not interested in it whatsoever. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else that wants to be heard in opposition?
My name is Patrick Leary. I live two houses down from this property. We have a history with this property. It's not been well-maintained. They've already built a building out back that is in conflict with the zoning regulations. They don't take care of the property. The leaves and et cetera are annoyance, and they haven't been there. I mean, I know that people have been coming and going, I have no clue who they are, but to say it's, to say a BMB is gonna be owner-occupied, these people have not these people have not been there, and haven't been there for quite some time. So, uh, we're opposed to this, uh, it's not good for the neighborhood, they've had parties there, um, like previously mentioned, they had their dogs going through our yard, et cetera, um, so I don't think it's good for our neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else that wishes to be heard?
Okay, my name is Woo Young Kim, and I live at eighteen oh three Gulfview Drive in the neighborhood. I've been living there for about sixteen years, raising my two children. So, I guess it's a safety issue that I feel very safe, safe in the neighborhood, because, I mean, they are very, like, old-time resident in the area, so whenever I see people, you know, who are taking a walk, I know them. When I see a dog, I know the dog, even though they are not lished, I know who are the owners. And we have golf course in our backyard, so I see people walking. I mean, it wouldn't be nice to see people walking in your backyard, right? Because it's along the golf course, but I'm okay, because I know them. But it's like every day, like, having people that I might not know, it's kind of, kind of tension that I really do not want, raising two kids at home. I got two girls, so, so it's more like a safety issue for me, so, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wants to be heard in opposition to the petition? Is the applicant still on the line?
Yes.
Do you wish to respond to any of the statements that were made?
Well, I'm sorry to hear that people are, um, having a poor experience, but I've not heard anyone, no one has given me any kind of advice about it, or left me a note, or left me a voicemail, or any kind of, any kind of communication whatsoever. This is the first I've heard of it. As I said, I'm sorry that they have had, um, a bad experience with it, and that, that this has led, led them to, you know, have to come out tonight to this meeting to have their voice heard. But, um, I'm, uh, I'm just sorry to hear that, because I would hate to feel like I have caused anyone any distress. I only, um, interest, try to keep my property and be able to, um, you know, pay things on time. I tried to sell it, um, I guess, year before last. I didn't have one single offer or any, any real interest in the property at all. And, uh, I have had a realtor come in to look at the property now, and, um, I don't think any of those people have, maybe one of them has ever, ever even been inside my house. But, um, the realtor gave me the advice about the, uh, the way the property taxes are. So really, frankly, I was just trying to option, to keep the property and keep the property up.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes.
Did you, prior to your making this application, discuss with any of your neighbors what you intended to do?
No.
All right, thank you.
No, um, but of all of those neighbors, I only know one of them.
Well...
So, um...
That tends to, I think, go to some of the qu- uh, qualms of the city about the owner occupied part of this, that you haven't really been part of the neighborhood.
My work takes me away.
I understand.
But my husband has been there, and I can tell you, he's not, he's only familiar with one of the people that even comment.
Your husband is living there?
No, he doesn't live there right now.
Because you're speaking to us by phone, but your husband's not here, nor is anyone here in support of your request.
That's true. Not personally in, in person, not there in person. I sent the letter, and that's why I called in.
No, that's fine, I'm just making that remark for the record.
So as I said, I, I'm sorry that anyone has been caused, any distress has been caused.
Does staff have anything further after the comments of the applicant and the comments in the opposition? Does any member of the board have any further questions or comment? And I believe we're ready for the question.
I will add that I just did a search on Airbnb for Urbana, and there's a hundred and eighty-one listings currently, so not seventy.
Interesting. Hello?
I'm, I know that there's going to be a motion, but I just feel uncomfortable voting for this right now, I just, I, I don't know. Part of me says that we're forcing this into a bed and breakfast, obviously this is not a bed and breakfast. And, uh, like, require an owner occupied use for, to fit this kind of criteria is just, doesn't make sense. At the same time, there's no real alternative, because the rental registration does not work in the terms of Airbnb. But the fact that in the city there are now a hundred and eighty-one rentals that are currently op- like, operating under Airbnb structure, I just don't know which way to go, and I think...
Well, I think perhaps this is a matter, a matter for the zoning, uh, to be revisited on these issues, but we have to deal with the situation as it...
Right.
...it currently presents itself. I would make further comment that, right now, as things stand, this appears to be a rather unique neighborhood, or particular section of the city where this is intended to go. The, the, uh, Gulfview Road, it's a T-intersection there, so it's not even a through street there. Would seem to be, without some clarification ordinance-wise, potential for a lot of snarled traffic and the like.
But that's, I guess, my point is that, right now, we're trying to force this Airbnb into the requirements of an owner occupied bed and breakfast, and from what I understand, that's a bed and breakfast that was ten years ago, where you would take a weekend off and then go and have a lot of the bed and breakfast amenities. Although it's air bed and breakfast Airbnb, I don't think it, it's really a platform where you can rental, rent by the day or overnight, and I think, you know, like, I'm, obviously, I don't think that this should be an owner occupied Airbnb, but at the same time, I feel hesitant, because I don't want to handcuff, uh, use that is under anyone's property right to be able to rent their property. And I think that's why I'm kind of back and forth on this.
I have a minimum to stay, you have to stay at least three days.
Well... Is there a way that the board can move for further an alternative that is not, you know? I mean, if there's a way for staff to investigate some sort of thing with building safety to improve the rental registration, I, I just, is this...
Well, I think the applicant can probably withdraw their request, but I think we have to deal with the situation as it presents itself now, and they can seek relief elsewhere.
I remember in two thousand and fourteen, this twenty-four oh two Proline Circle.
I'm sorry, Ms. Chester, can you speak more into the mic? Thank you.
I remember in two thousand and fourteen, the application for twenty-four oh two Proline Circle to be a bread and breakfast. And it, it was the same, the same issue. And, you know, and nothing has changed since then. And I think there was some talk about, what do we do about this? But it really wasn't up to us to decide what to do about this. And I have opinions, but that's not what we're doing here today. So...
Um, I think it's relevant to point out, too, that there are lots of Airbnb listings, perhaps, but we have only talked about two based on complaints. I mean, these aren't problematic in every situation. So I think that's really the, what we're doing here, is to respond to the incompatibility in this particular situation.
So if I know that my neighbor has an Airbnb and I issue a complaint to building safety or city staff, then technically, like, based on this kind of process that has happened today, I can basically shut them down?
I think that depends on the larger conversation and the rest of the neighbors in the neighborhood, as well as the, um, you know, the district that you happen to be living in, because they're not, they don't require this sort of approval in every district.
Yeah, we, I've been on the board long enough that when we dealt with this issue for a bed and breakfast on Michigan Avenue, the neighbors were substantially in opposition, but we granted, because the issues there were not the same. The owner was going to be, had and was going to continue to be in, uh, occupancy. Here, we don't even have that, so we can deal with these on a case-by-case basis until the zoning is changed, and that's the job of another body, not us. So...
So, but in conclusion, the, the complaints were that the dog ran into their yard, that they used the golf course, and that there are people in the neighborhood that are not familiar with.
Well, no, you ignored the first speaker's first complaint, and it was also mentioned by the staff that your covenant prohibits commercial, um, activity in this subdivision, and in response to Matt's questions, it, it's would-be commercial activity, whether you were there or not, and so that's...
Would renting it be commercial activity also, though?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay.
Commerce, making money off of some activity, I think that fits the definition of commercial activity, especially if your neighbors are occupying that as a residence, then they are not making any profit from the building. So yes, I think this, first and foremost, meets the definition of commercial activity, which is prohibited by your covenant.
Uh, which I've never seen, but, you know, ignorance is not any excuse, but I think those covenants are probably, um, quite antiquated.
They, they...
I, I did want to say, too, to my neighbor to the south, that, that, um, that couple that was leasing the house, they, um, he was not a, he, he worked at Home Depot, and he had, he worked in, he did doors and stuff, so I guess he just brought some of his stuff to the house with him, but he was, he was not a contractor, and there was no business going on there, they were simply living there.
Well...
That's just an aside.
All right, well, again, I'll give you one final opportunity to say whatever it is you have to say further, but I think we're ready to call this question.
Yeah, uh, go ahead and call the question.
All right. Do we have a motion?
I guess I move to deny, is that the way you say it? Uh, ZBA case two thousand and sixteen C dash oh three, a request by Sharon Walker Watkins for a conditional use permit to allow an owner occupied bed and breakfast at sixteen oh seven Gulfview Drive in the R one single-family residential zoning district.
I can't hear you.
Oh. I move to deny ZBA case two thousand and sixteen dash C dash zero three, a request by Sharon Walker Watkins for a conditional use permit to allow an owner occupied bed and breakfast at sixteen oh seven Gulfview Drive in the R one single-family residential zoning district.
It's been so moved, is there a second to that motion?
Second.
It's now been moved and seconded, is there any further comment? Would you call that for a vote, please?
Ms. Chester?
Yes.
Mr. Cho?
I'm staying.
Ms. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Mr. Welch?
Yes. And motion carries three zero one, so the application or petition is denied. We're now ready to call for hearing ZBA case twenty sixteen dash C dash oh four, may we have a staff report, please?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna go.
I'm sorry, what?
I'm departing from the meeting now that my case is finished.
Yes. Excuse me? Can you? Can you go outside, please? And we have a staff report?
Yes, just a moment.
Yep. Ms. Lopez? They're looking for you.
Chris, we talked on the morning, or we talked this morning.
Thank you.
Yes, I talked with Michael as well.
Okay, can we have a staff report on ZBA case number twenty sixteen... Okay, can we have a staff report on ZBA case number 2016 dash C dash zero four?
So the following is a request by Aaron Freeman of U-Haul Company of Illinois for a conditional use permit to allow a self-storage facility at 2010 South Philo Road in the B3 General Business District. I'll first give a summary of the current existing state of the subject property and then go into the proposal and then to the criteria for the conditional use permit and the analysis and the staff recommendation. This subject property in the southeast part of Urbana, it's a 5.31 acre lot, 50,000, 55,000 square foot building, zoned B3 general business. It has previously housed grocery stores and has been vacant, mostly vacant. Currently, it has a small bakery and a small dental clinic that's open one or two days a week. It has about 225 off-street parking spaces towards the front, and the current zoning is, as I said, B3 general business. Towards the east are condominium units that are zoned R4, R4 medium density, multiple family residential. Towards the south are vacant, are several properties that are vacant, also zoned B3. Across the street, across Philo Road, are residential buildings that are zoned R5 medium Those are some pictures of the site, just to give an idea of, starting from the left, moving to the right, and then going downward, it starts looking north and then centering and then looking a little further north to south, and then around the corner on Mumford. It's important to mention that there is an underground storm sewer that cuts through part of the property, generally displayed, the vicinity is displayed on this map. The applicant has worked with our city's public works department to create, there is no easement to preserve access for maintenance or repair for that storm sewer. The applicant is working with our city's public works department to, they've drafted up an easement agreement to create an easement for that storm sewer, so that this component would have to be taken care of regardless of a conditional use permit or not, but it is an item that is being addressed by the applicant as well. So the applicant represents U-Haul, which is proposing to convert the site to a facility that offers their truck rental, truck and trailer rentals, as well as a self-storage The idea is that they would offer truck and trailer rentals to the general public as, and then offering self-storage spaces inside the building and outside the building, which would be complimentary to their truck and trailer rental. They would add a total of 564 storage units, 121 of those being located outdoors. They would have 82 off-street parking spaces. And then, just by a rough calculation of our, our parking standards, they would need, if you were to estimate the largest possible need of off-street parking based on the, the different uses on the property, they would need as many as 56 required spots, of which they already have 82 provided. I should also mention the proposed uses and their, whether they are allowed in the B3 general district. B3 allows vehicle rentals such as the truck and trailer rentals, it's permitted by right. The component of self-storage facilities are permitted with a conditional use permit, thus why we are here for this application. The site plan that has been submitted displays a arrangement of the storage units that is located outside of the storm sewer line. You'll see it, it's a little faint, but you'll see it running through the northwest portion of the property. It sort of cuts down towards the southwest and then splits into two. That is, that is a site plan that was done in, in coordination with consultation of our city's public works department, so an easement could be created and that the units would not be located over the top of those lines. The outdoor storage units would be colored white, they would have doors of a different color, orange or red, most likely. As I said, there'd be 121 units located outside, that would be either 100 or 150 square feet, depending, and then they would offer more storage space options indoors, and the storage options vary in amount of, for the temperature control that's provided, the amount of time that's provided, the amount of space that's provided, just depending on what any customer from the general public would need. The applicant would be required to submit a landscaping plan to provide landscaping along Philo Road as well as to the residential uses to the east. It is not required to have screening for the north or south because those are also B3 properties. So the applicant has submitted a site plan that has appropriate screening along Philo Road as well, with trees and bushes, some of the species you'll see are listed in the upper right-hand corner. I want to make a note that the site plan that in, that's on the lower right-hand corner that indicates the landscaping, or the landscaping plan, has a different arrangement of storage units. That was something they submitted before they rearranged those, the placement of those units, so that they would not be interfering with access to the storm sewer. So the, that, the arrangement of those units is not current, but the landscaping component, which is the, what that visual is meant for, is current as well. There is an existing fence on the eastern side of the property that screens the building from the condominium owners towards the east. I will mention a little more about that later. So with that, there are the standards of, there are the criteria for a conditional use permit, one that the proposed use is conducive to the public convenience at that location. It would provide a variety of storage rental options to the public at an accessible location along the main arterial. It would provide a self-storage component complimentary to the existing truck and trailer rentals at the site. It would fill a commercial vacancy and provide commercial activity to an area that the city has aimed to stimulate. The second component, the second criteria, that the proposed use is designed, located, and proposed to be operated so that it will not be unreasonably injurious or detrimental to the district in which it shall be located, or otherwise injurious to public welfare. Staff analysis, that it would not be unreasonably injurious or detrimental to the district. It would have a similar scale and use intensity that is consistent with the commercial corridor along Philo. Its traffic flow and customer volume would not be any more intense than that of the grocery store that existed there previously. Also, there, the applicant is working to provide screening and landscaping appropriately as required in the zoning ordinance, to screen it from the residential uses to the east and west. And also that there's an adjacent self-storage facility that was approved with a special use permit in Plan Case 1967 SU5, which has not shown to be detrimental to the surrounding neighborhood. The third criteria, that the proposed use conforms to the applicable regulations and standards and preserves the essential character of the district in which it shall be located, except where such regulations and standards are modified by Section 7.3. The application, the applicant has worked with staff to make sure that the application is designed to meet all regulations of the city's zoning and building safety codes, with definitions, specifications in the zoning ordinance and zoning requirements of the B3 district. The proposal would not create any new legal non-conformities either. Before I go towards the staff recommendation, I'll just mention the communications that we've received regarding this case. I did submit, with each of you, there are some copies available in the back as well, a letter from Mr. Michael Lyon. I also talked with a woman, Ms. Lopez, who represents a neighborhood, or a homeowner association just to the east of the subject property. I believe she stated that she was also speaking for a collective association of three different homeowner associations. I would have to double check on that. But anyways, they, these residents were, these, Mr. Lyon and Ms. Lopez were speaking as people who live right nearby towards the east. They had expressed some concern about, that are stated in the letter, concerns about the screening fence that exists on the property. They state that that fence exists on the residential side and for the, and was financed by the condominium association. They were wondering if, in the event of the deterioration or required maintenance needs of that fence, what would, how would the property be compliant? In my conversation with the applicant, he has indicated a willingness to, to work with the residents to make sure that their property is screened from their facility. So he's indicated that will not, that, that is something that he would definitely be willing to help, help, a requirement to help them meet, to make sure that they're screened. They also expressed concern about the screening between the property, the, between the property as a whole and those vacant properties to the south on Mumford Drive. The zoning ordinance doesn't require those properties to be screened because they are B3 properties, just like the subject property is, but the residents were wanting to know about what would be screened from that, from the, the use of self-storage and truck rental to, to those vacant properties and to their residential homes as you move further east along Mumford. The applicant has indicated that, even though it was not indicated on the landscaping plan, that I will quickly go back to the landscaping plan. Even though that those two medians that you see near the driveway entrance indicates, doesn't indicate strong landscaping standards, that the applicant has indicated a willingness to place shrubs or bushes or, or small trees there, to provide additional screening for the storage units to the north. The amount of screening that might be able to be provided between the facility and the vacant properties to the south is slightly limited in that the building and the parking and the, the use of the property goes to the very edge of, you'll see where the property lines are, they do go rather to the edge of the property, the, the amount of space that is able to be practically provided for screening purposes is minimal. But the residents had also expressed concern about the lighting. The site plan, I will just go to there. The site plan indicates, rather faint lighting, that there were several lighting poles that were called to be removed, so they were requesting what the indication about of, how, how would the site be lit? And the applicant has indicated that the, even, even though the site plan does not specify the location of, he's indicated that they would still be replacing those poles that they remove into different locations to provide adequate, adequate lighting for the properties for security purposes and, and safety purposes as well. The, the applicant has also indicated in their application that they will provide video surveillance for the property, like they do all of their properties. As for the, if there's a concern of too much light that would be affecting other properties, the city zoning ordinance does give specifications for the amount of, for the lighting standards of any commercial property. For their building permit, they would be required to submit a photometric plan that indicates the lighting standards and the amount of foot candles for an extent of so many feet off the property as well, that it, and those standards in the zoning ordinance are designed to provide protection for the surrounding area of any commercial property. The residents also expressed a concern about just general functions of, you know, spillover of material inside storage units being loc, you know, being located outside, the unit's junk, parked and operable vehicles, things of that nature. And what we stated was that the city has existing, in our city code and in our zoning ordinance, regulations that do not, do not permit items to be spill outside of a storage unit, or items to be located outside, that everything has to be contained within storage units. So there is a city, in itself, there's a city code to, that allows enforcement against that. But also, the applicant has indicated that they are a national franchise that has their own rules for storage of their materials, that they are to be contained within the units as well, and that they would, and he's indicated that they would be no, no more tolerant of such activity than the city would be. So those are the, that was the, those were the concerns that I had discussed with the two residents I talked with today, I believe they're both here. Mr. Lyon is also here, they might be offering comments later on, that's their prerogative. Going to the staff recommendation. The, the board has the options of granting the permit based on the findings, granting the conditional use with terms and conditions. If you grant it with conditions, should articulate the findings accordingly or deny the conditional use. The staff recommendation is to grant the proposed conditional use with the following conditions, that the applicant submits a site plan that contains any adjustments deemed necessary for compliance with the city's municipal codes. Two, the use generally conforms to the site plan submitted as an application that shows the outdoor storage units located outside of the storm sewer line. And then the third item is that an easement for the storm sewer line is created between the property owner and the city's public works department. So with that said.
Any questions for staff? Hearing none, thank you. Is the petitioner here to speak? Please come forward.
I'm Aaron Freeman with U-Haul Company of Illinois at 1032 Stevenson Drive in Springfield. I'm respectfully approaching the planning in order to request the approval of the CUP application at 2010 Philo Road. U-Haul has purchased this parcel under the zoning terms of B3 within the zoning guidelines of truck rental, rental establishment, indoor storage, and as well as retail business. I'd like to make clear that U-Haul wants to only bring business to the area, just as we've been doing since 1945. Born and raised in central Illinois, I understand the needs of Urbana, and in the, and as a businessman and native, allowing our CUP zoning for the portion of the site does complete the goals for U-Haul's procurement of the property, but beyond that, the future of the district. Moreover, our business strategy, harmonizing. Moreover, our business strategy harmonizes to help meet our city's comprehensive plan. We have a long history of supporting development and economic activity, employment opportunities, and renovating blight buildings, including a recent Keeping Peoria Beautiful Award at our completed site in Peoria, Illinois. Our current tenants were delighted when I visit, visited them today. Their HVAC units and lighting were in full operation as they have been neglected in the past, and looking forward to many, many more improvements. I've visited many neighbors that shook my hand thanking us for helping rejuvenate the site and welcome us with open arms. Finally, I can assure you, we have a moral duty to give back to the community and be good neighbors. I'm here today to ask you to help allow growth and prosperity in this corridor to reach these goals. I'd also like to address the email too, if that's okay? It mentions, Mike had mentioned, or the neighborhood had mentioned protecting Mumford Drive, and I just want to reinforce that we anticipate to preserve that road and not use any traffic on it. So we have barricades blocked up, I think, so nobody can go over there as well. So the lighting in the parking lot, as Chris had mentioned, we, we are going to be relocating them and replacing them with LED lighting, just state of the art. And whether we have too much lighting based on the city or city ordinance or our neighbors will react accordingly. So we're definitely going to update the facility with lighting. Our plans, our site plan had changed several times, and that is kind of the reason let's created a holdup on that. The fence in the back of the facility with the screening, I support it. I'm, you know, whether it's on your property or our property, we need to help maintain That's, that's really all I had, our, you know, customers want this in Urbana, and that's.
Are any questions for the petitioner? Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience who wants to be heard in favor of the petition? Please come forward.
My name is Eileen Borja, and my condo is located at 2007B Eagle Ridge Court. That is directly behind the place where semi trucks would deliver food and leave their engines running for more than 30 minutes at a time. And I've lived there 10 years, and in that time, the building has been vacant. For a short time, it was occupied. There was several times we called because there was graffiti on the walls. The, that storm sewer was a revelation because frequently my backyard flooded and the, the idling of the trucks. And I will, I will tell you that every call that I was involved in was answered promptly and respectfully by the city staff, by the police, by the community development people, and we were all very grateful. I, I'll speak just for myself, was very grateful to know that the city was aware of the situation in the neighborhood and was, was very willing to come and provide service. And so this summer, when we started to see U-Haul trucks, I was very impressed. U-Haul is not a kind of business, as you know, where people loiter around waiting to get something. No, they come in, a customer comes in, gets their reserved item and leaves. And so right there, it makes it a more safe business to have in our, in our backyard. Their outdoor environment has been clean ever since they've been there. They've repaired the roof, they've paved in the back. And I have spoken with employees there who have said they want to be good neighbors. And I would like to say that I for one are going to believe them because they're a reputable national company and they don't want, they would not want to lose their investment or their inventory by having anything hurt by it. I'm very glad to hear that they might, they're willing to help us with the fence and the lighting. And I'm just very glad they're there, and I hope that the zoning commission will take that into account. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wants to speak in favor of the petition? Please come forward.
My name is Michael Lyon, and I am the author of the email that you have. And while it, while it does have concerns in it, I started my email out, I have told Mr. Freeman, and I'll, I'll tell you, I'm in support of seeing U-Haul in the complex. As I mean indicated, it's, it's great to see a reputable company filling the vacancies along this south Philo Road area. It will, it will improve our neighborhood, the tax base, and hopefully deter crime. With those things said, my note, which you've had an opportunity to briefly scan and, and see what my also concerns were, I have shared those concerns prior to my calling in with Mr. Freeman. I called this afternoon to talk with Mr. Marx to officially register my concerns because while Mr. Freeman is a very good man, and I believe will be a good neighbor, there's a bigger company that may have wishes that may be beyond his personal desires for that property. As such, I wanted to register the four concerns that I had in my note. And Mr. Freeman has indicated that he will preserve the traffic in and out of their property through the Philo Road entrance, which is good. The concern is my property is 1604 East Mumford, which is in the immediate southeast corner of their property, and I also own the condominium at the far end at 2007A where my daughter and her husband left. So I'm on both ends of the property. All of the access to the Eagle Ridge subdivision is through Mumford Drive, and if you've been out there, you may know that we have a daycare on the south side of Mumford Drive, which has a lot of very small preschool age children and a lot of traffic of mornings and afternoons to pick up and drop off. And if there were a lot of truck business going in and out, it would cause an opportunity for an accident. So we're, we're happy to hear that, that he will pledge to keep the traffic coming in and going out through the Philo entrance. The, the concern of lighting, I, I only had the drawing to react to, and I counted the lights, five of the six lights that are within the area of the proposed outdoor storage with I, which I am viewing as a phase two of their development merely indicated that they would be removed. And my concern was if you were to put only a small, my words, not his, garage door light up, that it would be too dark, and you would have the opportunity for shadows, which would only encourage the encroachment of the violent crime that we've seen across the street in southeastern Urbana. And we're hoping that, that will air in having extra lighting, if anything, to try to, to make sure that people don't want to be up to mischief in that area. So again, I'm reassured that he understands our concern, and there are other residents that are concerned about the type of lighting and upward versus downward direction of that lighting. The fence is an area of great concern. We enjoy the security and the privacy and the aesthetics of the fence. Unfortunately, like some of the rest of us, it's getting older, and there are areas that are in ill repair. And to have his support in helping us with that maintenance, what I hear when he says "help us," that means financially, when it comes time to replace the fence, which will likely be in the next year, and then ongoing maintenance to ensure that it stands and is replaced down the road into perpetuity as long as they're doing business in that area. I'm not sure if his intentions match my understanding, or how enforceable that would be. The last item of concern is really mine only as a resident of Urbana. I've lived in our community for 42 of my 62 years. I respect your knowledge and your decisions on what businesses should be where and what density we have. The concern that I have, I illustrated by the story of Jerry's IGA and the Krogers that were the two dominant food chains for most of my younger life on Philo Road. With the addition of County Market, there was trepidation and loss of one of those competitors. And then with the addition of Meyer, we've lost all three. Immediately to the north of the U-Haul property is a very small business that is the, I think I got the name right, Closet Space Self-Storage, which I said C-S-S-S, has been there for some time. It appears to have good business. It appears to be well-maintained from a neighborhood perspective that looks good. I also know that the Kroger development is, is also now renamed as the Urbana Secure Self-Storage. The owner is here, and I also am a space renter in that building, so I have property and storage inside that building. And they appear to be full, as I had to wait when I wanted to get my storage locker a year ago to put things in. So there does appear to be good demand. When looking at the initial set of drawings that I was provided in November in my conversation with him, there were no exterior storage units proposed. The 121 that are illustrated in the drawing was not part of what was proposed. Rather, it was the description of the interior of the building, which would be built to have storage, which if I've done my math right, offers about 34,414 square foot of storage facility in the blue and the area above it in the illustration. My, my personal thoughts, which you may freely disagree with because you do this for a business and I'm merely concerned, is why not approach this as a phase one? Let them get it converted and filled and have good business and demand for that business, and then come in and build the other 16,300 square foot of external buildings, which visually changes the site appreciably different than the artist rendition that you were given. There's an earlier screen that shows a picture of the front of the building painted in U-Haul colors with the branding and logo, which are very pretty, but there is no external storage buildings there. So I personally would love to see a phase one, phase two. I don't know if that meets, if that's even something you decide, or I hope it's not damaging to his business because I want to see them stay. So again, my, my comments are meant to be supportive, but I do have concerns as a neighbor and a resident of Urbana. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in favor? Hearing none. Now we would entertain anyone who was opposed to the petition. Please come forward. Yeah. I don't believe you were sworn in, were you? You came in?
No.
No.
I swear I don't believe in any religion, so I don't know if I should.
Quiet. Hold, hold on for just a second. I have to swear you in.
Oh, to what?
Do you swear or affirm any testimony you give will be true and accurate to the best of your belief?
Yes, definitely.
All right, thank you.
So here are my questions.
One more formality, you have to sign in.
Sure.
And introduce yourself.
My name is Nasri, and my last name is Sarafi. Actually, I'm the closest property to that place, like in proximity. Actually, I'm just behind it. So I have some concerns that serial, seriously are affecting me. Like, for example, the time that they are building those things, my house is going to be, the, all the noises are going to come in. Later, when the trucks are coming in, again, I'm the one that is hearing all the noises, you know? So and if, I'm asking if they're going to have like 186 units there, which means that if every person who is renting those places is going to come and visit that place just once a month, it means that six trucks possibly can come there, right? And then if the trucks comes in, how do I know that those trucks are just like breaking the fence, come in, you know, and just take something when the fences are not that reliable at all? And they're talking about helping to change the fences, but I don't know how committed they are to that question. You know, that's very important because when they start building it, how, how can we ask them to enforce that? And what are the exact commitment that they are giving to us right now? Exact, right now, that what, what are the commitments? And also, they are saying, first of all, I have a question, that how many stories those units are supposed to be? One or two?
Sorry, I don't.
Just one, okay. That's, that was another concern that I have, then. I think this whole situation betrays me more than anybody. Like, for example, if any accidents happens in that place, the, the house is going to burn down, it's going to first, going to be mine. And then I'm not so sure if there are chemicals there that are going to be if they spill over and if anything happens, you know? Because how can they screen it to see what are put in those units? And then they say that, for example, if they put a truck there, that that truck is not moving or it's sitting there, how do I know that, how, who is going to enforce it? Even if it is in, is in, is like following the whole city ordinance, like even if it is, like someone should report it and say, okay, there is a truck sitting there, you know? I don't know about that. And also, there are other things that I think at this point, we want more commitment from them, more exact commitment of what exactly they are going to do. And, and like, for example, very specifically about the fences, that what exactly is their commitment? Just saying that we are going to take care of it, or what are the layout for their lights? Exactly, because if there are so much lights there, I don't know how it affects me, you know? Because other houses are just a little bit farther, and they don't get affected as much as mine, or the two other neighbors that are just next to my place. And then there is a very narrow distance between our home and their, the place that they are going to have. So I believe that the plan should be exactly in a way, at least in phase one, that it starts from a little bit farther, or at least they keep a distance from that fence, because we cannot have everything just, just close to that fence. And then also, I don't know, I, I don't have any way to screen that who is passing that place or not, you know? Because if they come from the backside, they easily can access our property. It's not like, so there should be another way that make sure that there is no door or no entrance on the back, even if it is a small door. And then the other things that I want to ask is that, oh, okay. Okay, and then my question is that, are we sure that there are not other businesses that wanted to come there, that are better businesses there? I'm not asking that, that question is not right now, that question. I'm just like thinking in the future. If a U-Haul just a storage unit comes, then do I think that other businesses are more likely to come there or not? Because, for example, a store that sells like it is a boutique or something, most likely is not going to come there. Just it's turning to something like a zone that is attractive for, I don't know, mechanics? I'm just thinking, you know, that questions I believe are legitimate question, that they want to know that. Or, for example, I want to know that when the U-Haul went to other places and they established their property there, what happened to the value of those houses? It's like some research that, that if they provide us, it would be really good that I know about it. It's, it's not something that they have to, but it would be good and gives me some ease in my mind that what is that? And then there are like the pavement also in that area. And when the truck are passing more, it's more possible that those pavements get damaged. I, again, I want to ask them, again, this question, that how they want to have a way to maintain those. those pavements, you know, some promises or something, some written commitment that they are giving to us. And also, so is it possible that they do some more research, show us some evidence, exact, like, and things like some research data, whatever it is, that what is going to do? And what are exact commitment that they are gonna give us? What are they gonna do exactly for our fences? What are they gonna do for maintaining the noise, noise as low as possible, you know? So all those questions, I'm thinking that there should be at least a very more detailed meeting that we sit with them and talk about those things before we make any commitment. That was all my concern. So I don't know I'm against or for it, but I mostly have concern about all this situation. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wants to be heard in opposition to the petition? Please come forward.
My name's Amanda Allman, and my husband and son and I live at sixteen oh five East Mumford. So we would live directly across the street from Mr. Lyons and right next to the daycare that he mentioned. I'm not sure that, or I guess I would say, most of my comments are in favor of having U-Haul there. We've lived there for thirteen years, and we have seen that area vacant for a very long time. And we've also seen a sharp increase in crime in our neighborhood because of people hanging around there and coming into our neighborhood through the, the fact that there aren't any much in the way of businesses in that little strip mall area. And so far, U-Haul has been a very good neighbor to us. My husband and son walk to and from school at Thomas Payne every day. And, and my son, who's six, enjoys stopping and speaking to the U-Haul employees that always give him candy and have time for him. So some of the concerns that I had have already been addressed this evening, and I think thus far, U-Haul has been very good about trying to cooperate with the neighborhood and alleviate the concerns that exist. Two of them that, that I have had are whether it'll affect the home values in the neighborhood in Eagle Ridge and the condominiums that are directly behind it. Not sure how easy that is to answer. And the second concern is, will the crime continue to increase or will it decrease because of having security cameras and a presence there in that mall? And I guess that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Anyone else that wants to be heard?
My name is Christopher Tishner. I am actually the owner of the property directly to the north, Closet Space Storage LLC. We are not a national franchise. In fact, we are family-owned. It's myself, my wife, my mother-in-law, and my brother-in-law. We bought the abandoned nursing home that was on that property thirteen years ago. We basically gutted it and rebuilt it, much of it with my own hands and my brother-in-law's hands, and we've been running our site there for twelve years now. We started off as a nine thousand square foot unit or a square foot facility, and we expanded in two thousand seven, six thousand more square feet, so fifteen thousand square feet we are now. I guess initially, I wanna say that I have no problem whatsoever with U-Haul moving in there. Their truck service, their packaging materials, and that's a great addition to the neighborhood, and it's a great addition to that facility. It's great to have that occupied again. We've been there, like I said, for twelve years, and it has been vacant more often than not, and having another business there is great. But I do have some concerns about the plan. One is an issue of scale, and I think Mr. Dixon raised some of these issues. As I said before, we're a fifteen thousand square foot facility. Urbana Secure Storage up the street on the other side of Colorado. I don't know exactly their size, and I believe the owner's here, maybe he can comment on that. The scale of what they're proposing is, is it apparently in the interior is gonna be around twenty, twenty-two thousand square feet of storage. And then the exterior units they're talking about adding on would be like having another one of my stores in that parking lot, adding another fifteen thousand square feet. So I, I think, going to the character of the neighborhood, we're talking about a business on a much larger scale than what I operate on. I guess on a little lesser issue, but kind of related, is, is I don't quite visualize how close to the street those exterior units are gonna be, to what extent are they gonna be blocking the views for other businesses along that route? There's a, the church to the north of me has a gigantic, beautiful blue spruce that blocks my sign, to large part from the north. I'm just concerned about being blocked from the south as well. But I think on a bigger issue for me, it comes back to an issue of fairness. I, I referenced our expansion back in two thousand seven, where we expanded by six thousand square feet. We had originally planned to do a larger expansion. We've got about the back eastern quarter of our unit, of our lot, is right now a nice grass field that we keep well mowed and maintained, but we are unable to expand there. We approached the city of Urbana and their engineering group in late two thousand six, early two thousand seven, and due to a number of drainage issues that we thought we had adequately resolved, but the city disagreed on, we had to do a much smaller expansion than we originally wanted to do. And so I guess I have to go to a fairness issue here of if the city is going to accommodate this much larger unit now, I mean, those could have been my units back almost ten years ago now, that I could have been expanded to and served the community with that. So again, I mean, those are my concerns, and I hope you take them under, under advisement. Thank you.
Can we take a five-minute break?
Yeah, sure.
Thank you. I'm gonna adjourn for five minutes, please. We'll now call the meeting back to order. And we're still in the phase of the meeting where we are entertaining anyone who wants to be heard in opposition to the petition. Is there anyone else that, please come forward, ma'am?
My name is Donna Foley, and I am the owner of Urbana Secure Self-Storage. First of all, I want to welcome U-Haul. I think it's great what they're gonna do with the building. But I do have to say that when I find out about the outside storage, I think it's an overkill. I say this because, as you know, there's another storage facility up at one thirty, off of Tatman Court, that was done last year with a couple hundred units, and they are also expanding. I think having the three in a short distance, they're all climate-controlled, it's a great opportunity for everybody, but to have one that is taking all that, it's possibilities of hardships on the other ones. So what I heard earlier on the Phase One, Phase Two, I think that's great. That way you do see the demand, doesn't need to come in and then go and build for the outside. I just hope you would consider it to also, so the already existing businesses can have the opportunity to expand as well. That.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Please come forward.
I am Linda Lopez, and I wanna clarify a little bit. There are three homeowner associations within our one Eagle Ridge. There's two for condos, there's one that's sort of the over umbrella, and those are mainly the house owners, but we all have representatives. And there's more representatives here this evening, so I didn't want you to think I'm speaking for everyone. I am attempting to inform everyone, we're attempting to share emails, and part of that was what Christopher explained earlier this evening, and that was that Michael Lyons received information, and not each and every one of us, but mainly due to Michael's proximity to the property. However, we all do drive in and out the same way. I and others have done what we can to do some landscaping, just in the driveways, I wanna call it, as you go down Mumford on the left, in the parking lot area that is not used. We, in fact, inquired with the fire station and decided that it was essential to leave one driveway open. The arrival of U-Haul has been a plus in many ways. It's good to have a neighbor, and we wanna be good neighbors. After listening to many things here tonight, I wanna say that I again agree with Michael Lyons in the idea of Phase One, Phase Two. Let us welcome our neighbors with the indoor storage. Let us, in fact, as a neighborhood, try and do more in the way of landscaping. The fence has been a major issue, and that is, we have wonderful neighbors who go out there with a hammer and nail and fix the single board that someone has pried loose and attempted to enter, et cetera. We have looked at replacement. Replacement is costly, and it would have to be part of all three condominiums. However, if that is necessary as a barrier between U-Haul, B-three commercial, and residential, perhaps they want to even move that fence forward onto their property, where it becomes theirs to maintain. This is perhaps not the place to discuss it in any detail, but the help with the fence, to me, was left very, very wide open, and that's something that concerns me, particularly if, in fact, the board decides to approve all this additional building out front. It's a case where I keep going back to a couple of words, and it says, "The proposal would not be unreasonably injurious or detrimental." No, I don't know what unreasonably means, or it, it just sort of tugs. "There would be improved landscaping." Anything would be an improvement. "Would like to preserve the essential character of the area." We are a neighborhood that are truly neighbors, and we would very much like to preserve the character of the neighborhood. I think that that is, which I say my main statement, my other concern, simply after listening to a neighbor, is I would assume that the inside storage would have fire suppressors or whatever. I'm not sure what an outside building has or has not in the way of protection. I'm not going to rent the place, but I would be very concerned about what might be stored. I don't know that it's all home goods, whether it's chemicals or anything else. That's just not my area of expertise, and so I wanna go back to the controlled inside Phase One, let's say, welcome. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone further that wants to be heard in opposition?
I'm not in opposition.
You have to sign in, sir.
I have to sign in. You can't read it anyway.
You have to introduce yourself, too, again.
Okay, I'm Len Lopez. I live in the subdivision. It's my home. And when I come in from Phila Road and turn into there, I see the gates to the subdivision. I see a small farm field, and I see a blight to my left. As they've done it so far, they have the, all of the stuff inside, no problem. Now I see they're gonna put all this stuff outside, along with a whole bunch of parking I would like to say that the landscaping has to be a lot stronger than was suggested by one of the representatives. I'd like to see a tall set of full evergreen trees planted along there to isolate the subdivision, so that when I turn in there, I see evergreens, not storage cases. It's a small thing, but I'm, I wanna preserve the neighborhood. And it is a strong neighborhood, and we've been building it stronger. People know each other, we socialize together, we get together. This year, we had our first outdoor get-together in the fall, and we are working to include more and more people. It's not the kind of neighborhood I see in most parts of Champaign-Urbana. We know each other. And like I said, when I come in there, I wanna see, I'm coming into my home, and I don't wanna see that on my left-hand side as I come in, or it's my right-hand side when I go out. That's all I have to say. If they wanna do business there, that's fine, but I think, I think they're getting a little ahead of themselves, and they're, they're really producing something that doesn't belong in a neighborhood. That's it.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Please come forward.
My name is Bill Breier, and I too am a resident in the neighborhood at two thousand seven Moral Court. My wife and I moved there approximately one year ago. I agree with the previous people, with Mr. Lopez, that it is a very strong neighborhood. It attracted us there. We've recently just begun to get really involved with it. It has a strong sense of community, which we find quite attractive, so attractive that we've participated in locally organized cleanups throughout the neighborhood to clean the area along the fence that's under discussion, to clean up litter throughout the neighborhood on the side that borders the Meyer and such. And I've participated in some of the social activities. I agree that when I turn in, I feel like I'm turning into my home. I think that I welcome U-Haul because it does provide something to what is urban blight, and it brings some economic development to it. But my main concern is the screening and the landscaping around it. I agree that it completely has to be much stronger than that. They're welcome to be there, I think, just evergreen trees or something else that separates it from a neighborhood. I think what we're seeing here, I don't know the historical development of this zoning, of how this came about, but it just occurs to me, looking at the maps when I drive home at night, that we have a B-three district that probably existed, and now it's surrounded by residential neighborhoods, by single-home dwellings, by a daycare, by churches, such like that. And it, it's slightly out of sync now. It seems like by putting something in that's on the cusp of becoming sort of industrial, I don't mean, you know, industrial, I'm using terms lightly, like loosely here, but it's inserting something like that into a district that has become largely residential. And so to not screen it off is sort of going against the direction of the flow of what's the, the direction of this district is going. So I would be happy with them, I'm happy with them as our neighbors, provided that it has sufficient screening sets, we don't have to see this. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wants to be heard?
My name is Roseanne Barak, and I am a resident of one of the condos directly behind the fence, the famous fence, and the white building, the back of the white building. That's what I see out my back window almost every, every single day when I, when I look out it. And we've been putting up on the, some shrubs in the, in the area so that we, so that we'll block some of that. The fence is getting very... The fence is getting very old and rickety, and it needs, needs some work. I'm very much in favor of U-Haul going in. I've seen other U-Haul facilities, and I think in general, they do a really wonderful job of maintaining their properties and, and monitoring whatever is going on in that building. And I think it's going to only be a plus. The outdoor storage, I definitely think needs to be a second phase that was not presented when we first heard about this. And I think that we just need to take a step back and look at it a little bit further before that's decided. I agree with landscaping because I'm right there, you know? It would be wonderful to have landscaping right along Mumford there, and it should be a little more substantial than what they are, they are saying. And that's how I feel about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to be heard in opposition? The petitioner is now given an op, petitioner's now given an opportunity to respond to what has been said. Oh, okay.
It was mentioned about the chemicals and what could be stored in the storage, just with any storage locations. We have rule boards, contracts, and it was mentioned here previously that we do monitor it pretty stringently to ensure that the materials that's outlined in our rule boards are not stored in, in the buildings, including vehicles, motorcycles, and all that stuff. The fence is, it keeps coming back as the topic, and I just wanted to give some assurance that whether it's on our side of the property or your, your side of the property, that we do have a commitment to replace the fence or put the fence up, not necessarily with the, I see you have some current bids, but would also like to get some of our vendors too, and see what, you know, options we have there. Taxes was another, you know, whether it has a negative impact. We only improve our facilities and turn increases the, you know, impacts the tax, increases the taxes for the location and property taxes and the surrounding areas and businesses. There is a daycare that's right down the road from us on Mumford. I have an office in Springfield, and we have a preschool right next door to us, and we also have a middle school and high school directly behind us that we absolutely do not impact with our low-volume business. So it's really not, not a concern. We've created a great relationship with both the high school director and the preschool It was also mentioned about the crime across the street, and lighting, and so on. It could be in a condition that of course we're going to improve the lighting, relocate the lighting, and I have no doubt that our business will help create that buffer between the two corridors there. And landscaping, this, all of our landscaping will be installed by a local professional company and comply with all the zoning, you know, requirements as far as that goes. It was also mentioned about, you know, that they contribute to a cleanup in the neighborhood. And I mentioned earlier that we have a moral obligation to give back to the community, and there's no reason why we can't be involved in that cleanup and, and help out too. We want a clean and inviting location, that's our standard, and we also would like the area in the neighborhood to be the same.
Does anyone have any questions for the petitioner in light of the additional comments?
Do you own the three lots to the south?
No, we do not.
So, so you don't own those properties that are directly on Mumford?
No.
And so, okay. And so when you were saying that you, you were going to close off the access to, were you saying that, that you were going to close off?
On our side, yeah, we would close off the access. We currently have signage that's, I'm sorry. We currently have signage that stipulates not to, vehicle access not on this side, and we're, we installed barricades.
On lot 1510, you would be pulling out there, on that other lot?
No, absolutely not.
Okay.
We would stop. Do you mind if I go up there? Oh, okay. Here we go. All of the traffic would come in and out here. We would not go out of this entrance. This right here is preserved for fire lane, I believe. And we, we actually did, we reloaded, or we repaved this entire parking lot here because it was in just horrible repair and we're, working our way out as the weather permits. I don't know if you've seen the improvements on it.
So, so on lot 1508, or whatever that is, that, is that, that's also another easement there? That drive is also an easement?
That is not an easement. We do not use that access.
Okay, so that's, that's not an easement for that subdivision?
That's correct.
So somebody, somebody could buy that lot and put a building right over that?
You've got it.
Okay. And only that one is the same with the other one? Okay. So when people are saying that they want to come in at Mumford and see trees on the left, you can't do those because that's not your property?
This is not our property, no. We do not own 2028, 1506, or 1510. I, we cannot, I can't, we can't install landscaping on somebody else's property.
Hold on for a minute. Hold on. They're, they're recording this, so you kind of have to be at the mic to be picked up by the recording. But I believe you may have heard some of what was said, if you want to respond to that.
This area is all pavement right here. Yeah, we couldn't, you know, these, these two green spaces right here are, would protect the outside structures if that's what your concern is, and we would open those up with some more landscaping to help create more of a buffer than what's already there. So you'd have these trees here, and then some additional buffer here, and then one on the other side.
Sir, again, we, what you say is not being heard, so we're not being recorded. So I think he's answered to the extent he can that the landscaping is not, or cannot be put in a place that would be most beneficial to you all that live in the residential area. Sure, why not? Come on. Come on.
Can we still ask the petitioner?
Yeah, don't go too far.
No, that's right. This is his property here, all here, right up to that yellow line, this one here. He can put a screen along that yellow line of evergreens that are tall enough so that we do not see all of the outside material. We don't know what's going to happen with those other lots yet, but that will come later.
May I question whether you mean that they are going to plant 20-foot evergreens?
Well, they won't plant, they won't be planted. Well, they'll grow up. But you want it to be a full shield.
It's not going to be a screen for...
All right.
Oh, agreed.
All right. Thank you. Did you resume your seat, please? I believe...
My only, my only, my only concern would be planting trees in the parking lot, and also the property next door, how it would impact if there was a store, a business that went there. I understand what the concern is. I just feel like we're planting trees in the middle of a parking lot. And there's also, you know, there's businesses that are going to be in here too. We don't want to screen those guys out as well, especially with the trees that already exist.
Now, I believe there is a question from the board. Matt, go ahead.
I guess you just heard a lot of things, but just one side comment. I guess if you do want trees, you should talk to someone in Public Works, because I believe they have the city easement along that side. So that would, where you would direct your request.
Okay.
Not you, but the neighborhood. In your, I guess, response, there's a couple things, but I, did I miss anything on phasing? I know that that was something that was brought up with kind of the comments, and I guess you don't, you care to answer or not, but like, is there a reason why you would want to build everything all at once, or are you open to phasing, or?
We would prefer to build it all at once based on our materials that we order. It, it increases our cost, so, yes, absolutely, and also to provide our customers with options.
Additional questions? Joanne, go ahead.
Isn't, well, U-Haul is occupying the building now, so isn't the main reason for this hearing so that they can build the outside storage units?
The indoor units in the existing building are, those by itself are an accessory use, which is not requiring a conditional use permit. The addition of storage units in the parking lot pushes that to a principal use, which...
That's why we're here.
Yes. Yes.
Are, are you okay?
Okay, so how close is your plan to be next to the fence? How close is your layout here?
Right here is the nearest one, and it is, gosh, it has to be, I'm looking at it from, it's small.
Okay, so where was the fence, like which side of the fence?
Right here. So you're approximately maybe 60, 70 feet?
May I ask a clarification question on this conversation? I know it's a little strange. Is the question where the fence is from the existing building? Because it's my understanding, there's not a whole lot, there's nothing being added to the existing building in the back of, is that correct? So I just wanted to make sure that you understand, or that I understand what your question is.
No, I wanted to see that...
So there's nothing here in this area, and you live approximately right here?
Mm-hmm.
And all of it is towards the Philo Road?
Do you feel like you've had adequate opportunity to respond to all the questions that were raised?
Yes. Thank you.
Does any member of the board have any further questions of the petitioner? Thank you. We're ready to have the question called.
I'd like to move that we grant the conditional use of case number ZBA 2016 C-04 as requested based on the findings outlined in this memo.
Do you need to be articulated on that, or do they?
The memo's been submitted for the record.
Okay.
It's been moved, is there a second to that motion? It's now been moved and seconded and called for a vote.
Was there any further discussion?
Oh, I'm sorry. Is there any further discussion?
Do the conditions need to be part of the motion?
That's what I asked.
They were referenced in the ones in the memo, I wasn't sure if there was a desire to add any conditions as a result of the discussion.
There's no desire to add any, no. All right, and it's been moved and seconded, now we're ready to call the motion for a vote.
Ms. Chester?
Yes.
Mr. Cho?
Yes.
Ms. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Mr. Welch?
Yes, and motion carries. Thank you all. Is there any, all business? None? Any new business? Any? You have...
Yes, thank you for giving us an opportunity to be heard, for the business to listen and cooperate, I appreciate it. Good example of evidence.
Thank you. Merry Christmas. Any, any audience participation? Is there additional staff report? Hearing none? Study session? No. Then, then I move that we adjourn.